I'm going to call special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, June 24th, 2025 at 6:45 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman Govea will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
My calls.
Yeah, they're unmuted.
Yeah.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Gully.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Wilshire.
I'm here.
Twelve present, three absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Communication.
Communication has been received from President Laurie Wilshire, Board of Aldermen, regarding calling a special Board of Aldermen meeting on June 24th, 2025 at 6:45 PM relative to an update on the library feasibility study.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Okay, tonight we have a discussion or presentation update on the library feasibility study. So Director McCormick.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer McCormick, I'm the director at the library. I am here tonight with two members of my board, President Linda Laflamme and Scott Jakewood, and Ben Yutz from Design Lab and Keith Kelly from Harvey Construction. And we're here tonight to catch the Board of Aldermen up on the process. We're in the middle of a process of a space needs assessment and a feasibility study, the purpose of which is to plan, hopefully, the future of your public library. In 2022, we worked with Design Lab to complete a facility assessment, so a complete assessment of the systems and envelope of the building, which identified a number of deficiencies and really gave us a roadmap of the deferred maintenance that needs to be done to bring the building up to code and make it more usable. Since then, the Board has embarked on this feasibility study and space needs assessment that goes beyond just what's wrong with the building, but identifying the numbers and types of spaces that we need in order to provide modern library services to the city. Excuse me. So we're at the very beginning, well, we're in the middle of this study, but this is a very beginning of a very long design process. I was before some members of this board for, to discuss a bond. So at the bond hearing, some number of weeks ago, there was some discussion about this study, and we did get an additional million dollars to continue the design process, but it was clear from the discussion that night that we had been remiss in keeping this board up to date on the process of this plan, what the options are going forward, and asking for your input. So tonight, Ben from Design Lab is going to walk you through the steps that we've already taken in the space needs assessment, introduce you to some of the concepts that the trustees are considering, and then you'll have lots of time for questions, answers, and, we hope, some feedback. So having said that, I give you Ben Yutz.
Thank you, Jen. Can I try to make this full screen? Is that okay? There we go. That's a little better. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be back here. It's been a couple of years, as Jen said, since we completed the technical assessment. Just very briefly, we feel right at home with this planning effort with all of you. We've done a number of library planning exercises through our practice from the city of Somerville, the city of Boston down in Massachusetts, other municipalities, Providence in Rhode Island, and a number of colleges and universities in New England and further afield. So we're right at home doing this. We're excited to be here. But enough about us, that's not why we're here. We are here to talk about you and what we've all been up to for the past few months. I recognize this is probably hard for you all to see, but suffice it to say, we started this effort, as Jen mentioned, in late winter, much colder than today, February or fall. I don't know what happened to that screen.
Yeah, we're having a vision of the TV.
Is that okay? Okay, all right, I'll look at this one.
Sorry.
So we started with a sort of engagement and information gathering effort. That was that orange bit through March and April, which I'll talk more about here in a moment. We then presented those findings back to Jen, the library trustees, and the staff. And we're in this blue bar here in June and into July where we're exploring conceptual planning strategies. And that's what we're here to share with you tonight, some sort of big picture strategies and what might make the most sense. Moving forward, once we get through tonight and a little bit more community engagement, we're going to be handing off drawings and ideas to Keith and his team at Harvey to prepare cost estimates for each of those options, and then we intend to be back here in front of all of you for another sort of update on where we stand. So that's pushing out later into the summer, the light blue bar. Oops. So the orange bit, this was what we call our sort of engagement effort, where we were seeking input from the community at large. We had a series of focus groups, we did some staff outreach, so that's what I want to share with you all to start. So back in March and April, you see on screen here a summary of the focus groups that we held, with Jen's help, of course, facilitating and setting those up, but we met with a handful of downtown stakeholders, library trustees, of course, some social service partners in the city, city leadership, education partners, you know, folks from public schools and the local community college, and then friends of the library as well. So from that, you know, we got some initial feedback. And I won't read through all of this on screen, but it's important to pause here for a couple minutes, so you, or for a couple moments, I should say, so you guys can all sort of see some of the high-level feedback that we were receiving from these groups. Just a few highlights, the library has the potential to serve as a community sort of innovation hub, can certainly appeal to more diverse users. There is a desire, and certainly we heard this from multiple focus groups, to keep the library downtown. We heard an awful lot about what a great location it is. It's right on North Main Street and very accessible to folks. I can come back to all of this, but I want to keep moving along for you. We also did a lot of public outreach, just broader community outreach. We did this in a couple ways. We had an online survey that was posted throughout the library with QR codes to scan. There were links on the library's website. And then we did a pretty fun exercise where we had a series of boards set up in the library itself with sticky dots, with some simple prompts, sort of asking community members to identify what types of spaces were desirable to them and what types of library programs were desirable to them. So you see a snapshot on screen of that. We also toured the building extensively with the staff. You know, we knew the building pretty well, obviously, from our technical assessment, but we were kind of looking at it through a new lens when we walked through with staff to understand how they use the different spaces and just get their sort of feedback on sort of day-to-day operations and their challenges and the opportunities that they saw with the spaces. And from that, you know, we were really able to dive deeply into the existing space use. So we were able to go through, you know, every nook and cranny of the three floors and categorize the space based on how it was being used. So, you know, what we found, not surprisingly, there's a variety of different uses, and we, you know, categorized those into sort of main buckets, staff space, meeting space, program spaces, collection space, and then sort of all sort of non-library uses in the gray bit. So I want to pause here and just talk a little bit about what we refer to as a net-to-growth ratio. So when we say net square footage, we're referring to the space, you know, from the inside face of walls that are used for a specific function. So the inside, you know, take a meeting room, for example, or this room, we take the inside space, you know, all of these four walls, and that's the net square footage dedicated to that type of use. But there's a lot of space in any building that is also, you know, part of how the building functions, but not necessarily programmable space, and that bit, we contribute to the growth number. So that's all of the mechanical rooms, that's all of the hallway spaces, that's all of the restrooms, that's all the thickness of the walls, and all that sort of thing. So the big takeaway here is we have roughly 31,000 square feet of assignable net square footage in a 60,000-square-foot building. That number is not that ideal. That is a pretty inefficient layout, which may not come as a surprise to some of you. There's a lot of space in that library that, in the existing building, that could be better utilized, so that's something I'll share more about here. But, you know, ideally, in big-picture numbers, you know, we're looking at to a net-to-growth ratio of 30 to upwards of 40, maybe 45% for a library. So that helps us kind of get from the net number of the spaces we know the library needs to function, and then applies that to the overall square footage of a building. So through all of that, here were some sort of common themes that we heard from folks related to the different aspects of the library. There's certainly opportunity to co-locate and better arrange the staff in the different departments. They're kind of scattered, scattered or hither and yon right now, just as the library has grown and new departments have been added or shrunk or that sort of thing. A lot of demand on the existing meeting spaces in the library. We heard demand for even more spaces, particularly on the small-to-medium-sized meeting room space. Use services, we heard across the board from the broader community, from the focus groups and certainly from the staff, that there's a lot of opportunity to expand use services, ranging from the children's, you know, school-age space up through teen use. There is a sort of teen space now, but it's certainly not idealized in its location or its size or configuration. And there's a desire also for a dedicated program room for use services, to host programs dedicated to that age group, which is a very common thing that we see in libraries. A little bit of opportunity to massage the collection size, and certainly, as I said, opportunity to make more efficient use of the overall space, but there is a need to grow restrooms, to make sure there's enough adequate restrooms that are accessible. Elevator desperately needs to be updated, so there's other bits in that kind of gray category that need to be addressed as well. So, as I mentioned, rough numbers, we have about 31,000, 31,500 usable square footage now in the existing 60,000-square-foot gross building. We anticipate, because we're not finalized on any of this yet, we're still refining it, we anticipate through the desired increase in library spaces, a net number of 32,000 to 36,000 square feet. And then depending on the grossing factor and whether we're renovating or building new, the gross square footage could range anywhere from 47 to around 60,000 square feet, you know, similar to the gross square footage that's there now. But that's a big range, and that's, at this point, that's because we haven't, you know, dialed in on any specific scheme or any specific layout. So before we talk about sort of the strategies that we're considering, you know, I hope this goes without saying, this is, you know, fundamental in our work and our perception of libraries, but, you know, we see libraries, you know, as a really important part of the municipality, of the community, and we think there's great value in it. I should have mentioned at the beginning, we heard an awful lot about the location of the library. We also heard a great deal about how awesome the librarians are and the staff and all of the programming that they do, and there's a great, you know, there's a great appreciation for all the things the library does from the community. As we consider different strategies, you know, there's just some very broad considerations that we should be thinking about. You know, for a library of this size, you know, that really works best on two, potentially three levels. You know, a 50,000-square-foot library is pretty common for a city of Nashville's size, around 90,000 people. There's a lot of variables that go into that, but that's about the right number, and especially for a library system that doesn't have any branches, you know, that'll sway that number a little bit. The city of Somerville, for example, down in Massachusetts, around 80,000, I think, 85,000 people, so comparable, it's much more dense, of course, but they have branch libraries. They have a central library and two branch libraries. So, you know, that's part of the thinking in our mind as we start to focus and dial in on that overall number. But anyway, for that size library, you know, two, maybe three floors is best. Given the location, you know, downtown and the proximity to Main Street, access, a lot of people arrive by foot, so thinking about people arriving both by car and by foot is important. We do want to consider and try to maintain that street-level access, not necessarily the access that's there now on screen, but having that walkability and that approachability for the pedestrian and from a car is really important. Of course, the library needs to meet the diverse needs of the community. It's a place of public enrichment. And we do see more and more, very common in sort of new libraries today, you know, an outdoor space that helps facilitate indoor and outdoor connection and a programmable space that can be associated to the library but's outdoors. That's a huge benefit and community amenity. So, looking at your site and the river, of course, you are all familiar with this, but kind of Main Street runs top to bottom there on the right. You know, we're exploring four strategies, which I'll talk through. One is renovating the building in its current footprint. One is renovating a portion of the building in its current footprint, but then potentially demolishing and adding on to it to create sort of a new first impression, new sort of entry sequence. We're exploring a strategy to demolish the existing building and build on that current site in yellow, and then we're pursuing strategies to build new on the adjacent parking lot, that green bit that you see on screen there. So we've done a little bit of existing conditions analysis, and, you know, please keep in mind, we are architects and library planners, we're not site designers. We haven't had the benefit yet of, obviously, interfacing with all of you, but also talking to, you know, city planners about parcels and all of that. But, you know, there's a couple sites that, you know, we're considering that I just mentioned. The yellow bit is the library site now, as we understand it, you know, city-owned. There is that sort of hashed yellow bit just adjacent to it with the word plaza on it. That's where we understand that there is a proposed plaza project. So we're considering that as sort of one site, and then the green site as well. Those dimension lines on there, those are not dimensions horizontally, that's actually from the river. So that's grade. Not surprisingly, if you've been there, you know, the library sits up quite high over the river, and there's a lot of topography to get from either the library's main level down to the riverbank, that's, in rough numbers, 20, 25, 26 feet, and then the adjacent surface parking lot sort of grades down a little bit from the library entrance there, but that's still about 20 feet above the riverbank. So something to keep in mind, you know, that much slope on a site, either site, is something that would need to be managed. For either of these sites, you know, the proximity to the river, in our minds, is a huge, huge, major asset. You know, we understand that there's plans to further develop the Riverwalk, and is there an opportunity for the library to engage and be part of that, perhaps even be a path to get people up from that Riverwalk up to the Main Street level and kind of use the building to navigate that grade. There's adjacent parking, obviously, that we know, and it's very, very close to Main Street, very walkable to downtown, so both sites have a series of, you know, considerations that we've highlighted on screen. So the four strategies, you know, at a high level, are what I mentioned, that we're hoping to get some input and feedback from all of you on today. One is renovating sort of in-kind what's there. We do see immense potential to reconfigure things and better support the library in ways that they can't currently function. We also see opportunity to completely re-present the character of the building, if that's desirable. Obviously, it's a building from the '70s, it's sort of a brutalist-era building, but there's opportunity to kind of change that character, even in the renovation strategy. The addition strategy, as I was suggesting, is a partial demolition of the existing building, which I'll talk about more, but that's to sort of create a new first impression, a new entry sequence from the parking lot, and engage the plaza in a really nice, meaningful way. Replacement is just that, tear the building down and build back on that site. And then there's the relocation to build on the adjacent parking lot site and then vacate the site that it currently is. So the renovation strategy reuses the existing structure. You know, from a building perspective, we do see a lot of value in that. There's a lot of embodied energy, there's a lot of embodied carbon in that building, in that structure, so that's something to consider and something that we will be exploring with the Harvey team. But it can be completely replanned, it can be completely reconfigured, and the architecture, the sort of presence of that building and what it looks like can be completely changed as well. It can maintain the relationship to that plaza project that's, you know, queued up to go, and it sort of maintains its presence over the river. Those little dots on there, you know, that's really just implying that there's an opportunity on the lowest level to engage that Riverwalk and do something, do something on that side of the library that completely doesn't exist now. So the addition strategy, part of this idea is, as a way to sort of kind of re-present the library in a completely new light, is to demolish a portion of it, the portion that's closest to the adjacent parking lot now, so that you can incorporate a new entrance that's closer to the parking, you can get a new elevator in the building, you can get the appropriate stairs and restrooms in the building, and you're not wrestling with the configurations of the existing, the existing constraints of the existing building to do all of that. And the opportunity here is to create just a brand-new first impression. It can feel, it can feel brand-new, it can feel fresh, and it's a complete change from what is there now. You can start to see on the adjacent site, we've done some analysis on the parking that's over there. There's just two surface lots. We understand a recent parking study has been done that identifies a need for more parking in, you know, sort of the North Main area. I forget the actual figure, but it's just to say, if we need to build on that site, you know, we need to obviously think about parking that we're offsetting for that building and how might that be managed. The replacement strategy, you know, this diagram, that sort of kinked bar, that's just suggestive of amassing in a volume that meets that sort of target gross square footage number. There is some, you know, geometry there that a strategy may take cues from, from the river, from the adjacent lots to define that. You know, this is something that we'll be getting into with Harvey as we switch gears into this next step, but, you know, building on that hillside, demolishing what's there on that hillside and then building on that site, you know, may present some logistic challenges, so that's something that we'll be thinking about as we get into this next phase to put numbers to these ideas. And for those who, you know, feel like there's a sort of connection to the architecture of the existing building and what that building has meant to the city of Nashville for so long, you know, there's a little bit of that sort of loss, right? You're losing that, but you can, of course, build with something new. And then lastly is the relocation strategy. So in this instance, you know, the library is demolished and that site is reconsidered for some type of new development. So it's identifying some potential parcels there that, again, we're not, we're not sort of site planners, but we did these diagrams to help facilitate this evening's conversation about what might be a probable building footprint on that site, but a lot to be discussed there. And then on the green side, we are, you know, sort of commandeering, if you will, a portion of that surface parking lot for a new library structure. You know, we're kind of nudging that as close to the plaza and to Main Street as possible to sort of maintain that sort of pedestrian connection, but where exactly that sits on that site, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of options, but we are trying to sort of minimize building footprint for a library and then also maximizing the surface lot spaces. So, you know, with a reconfiguration of that surface lot that's there now, you know, we think we could yield about the same numbers of spots without an actual parking structure. I think, I think that's about it. These two slides are just intended to imply different footprints. To my point of, you know, how this building is configured on this site, there's a lot of different ways to consider that. This is just giving you kind of the ballpark range of what a footprint would be for a two, in this instance, a three-level building, ranging from 45 to around 60,000 square feet. And in this instance, it's just two levels. So you can see, you know, considering on this site, you know, you might want to consider a three-level building to be able to utilize the rest of that site for other purposes. So that's where we're at. Those are kind of the big-picture thoughts behind the current strategies. As I mentioned, our next steps are to get sort of plan arrangements of how the interior of these strategies might be arranged, dial in on that gross square footage, and then share those with Keith and his team, so over the next couple of months, we can start to develop conceptual cost numbers. That's it for this evening, at least until I can answer any questions or any discussion you all may have.
Anyone questions? Alderman Thibodeau.
Yeah, I mean, I just have some comments about it. You know, obviously, the cost is going to be a huge deal, whether, you know, what option I decide I would vote on. You know, I look at, you know, the collections over the last 50 years, and, I mean, to me, libraries about books, it's about a place for children to go to, it's programs, it's, I see the collections whittling down year after year after year after year, and every time that happens, more space and more space and more space opens up. And there's a lot of space in that library right now that I think's underutilized. And so, you know, do we need a whole new library that's probably going to cost, you know, I don't even want to guess, because I'll end up in the paper, but a lot of money. And so I know there's fixes that have to happen to that library. It has to be, something has to be done to it. It can't be like the way it is. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm not wedded to the way it looks. I mean, that's, even though it's historic and the fact that it's been here for 50 years, it's got a '70s look, you know, so for me, you know, I like the old classic-style library, so we don't have that anymore here. So I'm not wedded to that, but I think, you know, price is going to be a factor. What we're going to be using it for is a factor. If it's just for people to hang out in, doesn't need to be a big, huge library. If we're going to use it for community events, and, I mean, there's lots of rooms in there now. I go in there and I see, I go in there at least once a week, and I always see plenty of space, so I don't know. But at the minimum, we need to do something, it needs to be at least renovated, so, you know, but I'm going to want to see costs at some point, and that will kind of determine where my mind goes. So thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Couldn't agree more about the use, the amount of space. There's definitely space to be repurposed. From a collection perspective, what we understand is, you know, the collection, it has reduced over time, but it's sort of the inverse of a plateau. It's sort of leveled out, so I don't think there's- So I don't think there's plans to make any major reductions further to the collection, but as you point out, there's opportunity to reutilize some of that space.
Further questions? Alderman, Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with what my colleague just said, and I also agree that we need to do something with the library. We've kind of kicked that, that rock down the road much too long. I know that beyond this study and so on, so this may go beyond the study, and I did see Director Hanam walk in, I know there were conversations about the potential of working with another partner, and that may not, I don't know whether that's even part of this study or conversation that the library trustees have had or something. But if we did demolish, if we did move this to the parking lot area, working with a partner to perhaps kind of build something up with a partner, that the library would become part of something. Is that at all in this study or in this conversation or?
So Jennifer McCormick. To answer your question, that isn't part of this study, but this study is required in order to move forward with that concept. So the information that will come out of this study, the square footage that is required for library services, helping you all in the community imagine what more the library could do, what we could do better, and then hopefully identifying out of those four scenarios that Ben discussed, one or two that the aldermen and trustees want, might want to pursue. So having all of that answered before or at the same time that proposals might be coming in from a private developer. So in my mind, and Liz may, she may disagree with me, but I think getting this study done first puts the city in a better position to evaluate proposals from a private developer.
Ma'am, thank you. So, that, that makes sense to me. So to understand what the needs, what the square footage, what programming and so on, you would have the ability to do, or the community would want you to be able to do, when we would try to partner with a private organization, to say to them, this is a space we would want.
Right.
With, with you, we would be able to have a piece of paper that would say that.
Right.
Is that what you're trying to say to us?
Yes, exactly. And additionally, and this is a wild scenario, this is in my imagination, it hasn't happened. If a developer were to say, we want, you know, the spot that the library's on now, we want to put a hotel there, and we'll give the city the parking lot and you can just plop your library there, then this board would have an idea of, will have an idea of how much that will cost, what kind of library can go on that parking lot, how much will it cost? I don't know, Director Hanam, if you want to contribute anything.
Liz Hanam, Economic Development Director. I, I think Jen has it exactly right, is we, understanding what our needs are, help us go out to the, the market, no matter what we're going to need to put an investment in from the city side, this can help us understand how much of an investment we're going to need if it's just us. And then this proposals from private developers can help us share costs and kind of reduction, like economies of scale almost, and, and help us understand, you know, how much of a cost savings is it to sell a piece of land or to partner on this? That way, what, now that we have information or once, once we have dollar numbers, we can actually make those decisions in an informed way, rather than just selling pieces off kind of to, to pay for things. So we can understand, have a better understanding of, of a strategy around the whole thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, it looked like one of your proposals was to tear half the library down and rebuild something in its place and attach to the existing library and perhaps modify that. I've done a number of school renovation projects with Harvey and Keith, and I have to believe that, that renovating the existing building a phase at a time is probably less expensive than building a new building. The minute you start building a new building, your costs will be very high, because you make no use of any existing materials that you have. You have the existing footprint of a building that you can modify, and I'd like to see what that is relative to a new building. Even if it was smaller, it's probably still going to be expensive.
Yeah, I think, well, it's our intention to look at, at both of those strategies. So that's, I don't know how to go backwards. Oh, there you go, easy enough. It is our intention to look at different strategies and then, as you're saying, get Keith and his team involved to put proper estimates to them. It's a good point that you bring up about phasing, I mean, that's, that's an important consideration that we'll need to be thinking about as we develop these initial estimates. But, you know, that's the next, that's our next step.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
So, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, as, as you were talking and I was imagining my, my last visit to the library, which was yesterday, as a matter of fact, you know, the, I, I, I know what you're talking about as far as, you know, there, there's a lot more room. I guess that's because there are a lot fewer books. And, you know, I mean, you know, I'm a lawyer, and when I first started practicing law, just about every, every lawyer had a, you know, a room like half the size of this room with, with books that, that we needed, you know, copies of the statutes, you know, you know, state and, you know, the, you know, Circuit Court, the federal courts. And that, that's, that's all changed, you know? Just about every lawyer that I know has gotten rid of all of those books and, you know, people are using them, buying them for decorations and, and that type of thing. So, so I, I see in, in my business, you know, books are, have become pretty obsolete. Everything is digital. But I don't know, you know, from, from, you know, the library, the public that the library serves and, you know, I've, I've not seen studies about, you know, what that does to kids as they're growing up. You know, are they adapting to the digital world, probably faster than I have, but, but does, you know, is that affecting their ability to learn? You know, is there some reason that we would not go completely digital and that we would, you know, retain? I know the historical collections are, I'm not talking about that, but as far as kids being able to learn, is it affecting, you know, is there anything about how that affects their brains and development?
If I may. Lyndale Flamm, I'm the Chair of the Board of Trustees, as I'm sure you all remember. First of all, you would have to speak to an education professional, really to answer those questions. I can tell you that kids learn differently. Some kids do really well with the digital, but some kids need that tactile book in order to learn, that thing they can take home and have in their hands and feel is important. So yes, I think there will always be a place for books in the library, but I also think we're talking a lot about 1970s library right now. We're talking about books. And our library now, as Jen will tell you, is much more of a community center. It brings people together, it does lots of programming, it hosts city departments to do, to do things inside and out the library, and outside of the library. And that's, unfortunately, this was an excellent presentation, but I've seen like the details where we get into what's going to happen in that new, square-ish-looking space, which could be a very large gathering space for large events in the city that other city departments could use, that could be a showplace for the city beyond the Arts Center, we could have our own gallery there, for example, and then a conference could be held there. And so we're talking about bringing, changing a space so that all the youth services can be together, so the kids can, can be in the children's rooms doing their, their storytime, but then know that, gee, when I'm a big kid, I can go over, do there and, and use that cool makers lab, or, or maybe someday I'll be able to come back and use the video studio that we've set up downstairs in a new space that's been rewired to like be modern. So, and, and, and I, I speak, I speak with love, this library was my library growing up, once you moved from Library Hill. And so I've been there and I've been that kid, and I know why it's important to have these spaces and to show as a community, we think the library is important in and of itself and it's more than books. And there's my soapbox, I'll get down.
Anyone else? Any questions? Alderman Moran.
I just have a comment and kind of jumps off my colleague from Ward Five. So this past holiday weekend, I took my kids to Gettysburg in Philadelphia, but prior to leaving, my wife made sure they went to the library to pick out the books of the history of Gettysburg and Philadelphia that they could read on their, on the road trip. And there are, there are many research articles about learning differently and that the feeling of the book can make a big difference if someone has ADHD or other cognitive needs.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much for your, your presentation this evening, we appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alderman Wiltshire, I just wanted to note that I got here. I happened to hurry.
Yes, Madam President, we're going to get a copy of this presentation for the record.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the June 24th, 2025 special meeting of the Board of Alderman be adjourned by roll call.
Okay. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and we are adjourned at 7:28 PM.